If I could please have the Nelson County High School Honor Society come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. If I could please have an approval of the agenda, a motion to approve it is written.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good, the motion passes. Good evening. We have a fair amount of recognition for this evening. So we're going to start with our National Honor Society. If I could have that group come forward for their recognition. This group, if you've not, if you've not noticed, they have done an amazing amount of work and hopefully they'll highlight that in the coming few minutes, all the things that they've done in a short amount of time of this school year.
I was trying to get your recognize.
Yeah, I was avoiding you on purpose.
All right, a good little background about this group. So to be eligible for the National Honor Society, the students need to have a three point seven five GPA, you know, disciplinary and frightens at the high school. All of those students fill out an application and they must score twelve out of possible fifteen points to be a National Honor Society. So these students, what they've done this summer, they have donated a lot of their free time to do things around the high school. I greatly appreciate you for their time. Thank you. So the students trace and paint softball and baseball dugouts that they updated in Nelson County Governor Hill logos. They completed a fundraiser and a family restaurant. They helped guide students on freshman orientation throughout the school to see their classes and teachers. They helped out tour guides and helpers to open house and registration night. They handed out programs for our all county day and all staff returning to school. And they planned to buy and build three new picnic tables for the outside eating area at the high school. I think we have two in place right now. And they also plan to participate in the adoptions ceremony and reception for the new high school members. National Honor Society members. So the members here who want to recognize is Raven Allen. She's playing golf, not me. Yes, Alyssa Butler. Matthew Drumheller. Zoe Evans. Candice Fitzgerald. Ava Garrison. Ethan Holm. Callie Mullins. Sophia Ogilvy. Callie Pugh. Rachel Thompson. Isabel Albon. And there are two sponsors, Ms. Suzanne Hausner and Beverly Bueble. They have done a great job with this group with their summer projects.
So I, as someone who's new to the county, one of the first things I was able to participate in was the community service project at the restaurant. And just being able to see our kids invested on a Saturday morning to be able to get donations and get funds in order to put it back into a school is impressive. And then to then donate their time and efforts into physically then putting those spirits.
The overhead, the N C, the C D R on the dugout, but also all throughout the school. And so that type of thing, that kind of meditation is fantastic. And so I just want to say thank you very much for being able to kind of give up yourselves in that service oriented aspect of National Honor Society to give back to not only your peers, but ultimately your entire community. And so I'm just so thankful that you guys are so invested in our, we're wanting to get your new crop of inductees here in a timely fashion to be able to get them involved and get them moving forward for the school and community. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I think Mr. Walker, we're going to call you back up again. Mr. Walker's going to recognize some students and some staff that you have had. S O L schools by the management.
Well, I'll go give an overview here. So in this fall and spring semesters, we administered seven hundred and thirty-two non-writing tests for the school year. A hundred and ten were writing tests given, and two students, two students that took the writing test in the spring scored a perfect score of six hundred on the post test. So all the tests given, I think it was very comprehensive that it is four six hundred. I know one of them were very surprised and they did very well. But it was a new test for the second administration and did a great job. So Beverly Bueble, she got a sick perfect score of six hundred. And Lola Coy would just, so I'll be giving there. So the teacher I would like to recognize, I called her the decimal guru of our school. So Ms. Bueble, she did a great job. In the fall, we had a class at the one part two. So four, four students took the S O L test in the fall. All four of those students passed. In the spring, she tested twenty-one students, fifteen passed and six, six were eligible for local verified credit. All twenty-one students were accounted for. From the summer session, she had seven students attend summer school. She was seven out of seven on the pass rate for that soil. At Boots Academy, she had two students attend. She was one out of two. The one student didn't pass with the four hundred score of three ninety-nine. She's did a great job in there.
Verified credit.
Yes, and she got the verified credit. Yes, Ms. Bueble has done a great job with our after one students and having their success rates go up and everything. So I just would appreciate her for her hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I know I see a couple of Honor Society students coming in last minute. Do we want to recognize, just because we want to recognize every student, Ms. Bueble or Ms. Walker, do you want to recognize the three students who just hang in by name? So these are three more of our students that Mr. Walker announced. We have Sophie. Kylie Mullins and Ethan Holm.
Thank you. I know you guys are, and I don't know if you noticed that Matthew was able to list off like band practice, soccer practice, all of that. And these are the kids that are involved in so much and they still continue to give back. So we just appreciate the effort you have in being here, but also give back to your community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I think it's exceptional work that we see our staff, our teachers and our students doing. We always want to acknowledge that too. Thank you all very much. One of the other things we think it's really important as a board, as a school system, is that partnership with people within our community. And that partnership we saw solidified or continue to build last year with an art contest between our Friends of Nelson and the middle school teacher, Ms. Lori Davis. I'd like to call Jill Abrams, Mary Iserman, Susan McTwain, who's still here, Lori Davis forward to give us a little understanding of what the Friends of Nelson partnership was with the reusable bag, please.
Thank you. So I'm Mary Iserman. I'm with Friends of Nelson, current president. For those of you who don't know, our group was formed in 2014 to fight the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, taking land from citizens of Nelson by eminent domain. In 2020, that pipeline was canceled and we are still working to release the easements that the community still holds over some of the county landowners. But in addition to that, we've investigated some other ways that we might be able to help improve the county that we live in. And it's led us down some interesting paths. So Jill's going to talk a little bit about one of the projects that we started working on in that student benefit school.
So last summer at the farmer's market, we started a, a reduced for use recycle, zero waste. We couldn't ever decide on what exactly we wanted to call it. But it was basically bringing awareness to the use of plastic in our county. When we were fighting the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, all the vehicles that natural gas is used for is to create plastic. So we thought that'd be good to put this on. As we wrapped up the end of that sort of campaign in the market, talking about products and trying to disseminate a lot of information, we came up with the idea of working with the environmental club at the Nelson Middle School and running an art contest with Lori Davis as the teacher. Katrina Brouman was the environmental club person along with Mary Johnson. Both Katrina and Mary are now over at the school, but Lori's still here and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the contest. But we decided to focus on Naturally Nelson. We sort of partnered with the Rockfish Valley Foundation, who had already been using that tagline and we thought that would be a perfect fit. So we, and we worked with Lori in terms of what the kids were studying at the time. And we chose some birds as our theme since that's what they were working on. Lori can tell you more about that. And then we had three winners. We had, well, we had a first place winner and then a second, third, and an honorable mention. So Avis Delph was our first place winner. Brady Corbett was our second place. Lilabuck was our third and honorable mention was Lily Penny, Perry, sorry, Perry, Lily Perry. And the winner we chose, we went ahead and we printed on these bags here. And they're reusable shopping bags made with reusable materials. And we, we're giving them away at different events that we do for Friends of Nelson. And they're also available at the local H I G A in, on the one fifty-one side. And I don't know, Food Lion didn't get it very, just the, the local I G A and also the basic necessities store. So there's a couple of places where you can find them. So, and I'll let Lori talk to you about the contest.
Right. So anytime I'm given an opportunity for my students to do a poster contest, I always have to turn it into a two week unit lesson. So we did do a lesson plan. I had seventy-five students that week. So we worked, basically did a lot of brainstorming at the beginning, talked about what makes a good poster. What visual elements in a poster make a person see it from a distance that want to go up to and really read what it says? What is the purpose of a poster? We talked about that. Then I introduced the elements of art and the principles of design, all the different words that the kids needed to learn to make a really good poster. We spent a day discussing topics of the environment and recycling, clean energy, as well as activities related to Nelson's natural resources. Then we spent another day or two practicing good lettering styles such as bubble letters, brush letters, Gothic and cursive script. So we spent a couple of days doing that. Then we continued to discuss what subject matter in art was and how you make a good subject matter in art, make a good poster. The kids had an opportunity to look at a list of twenty breeds of birds in Nelson, types of fish you might see in Nelson County, crops, farms, tree species, insects, fruits of Nelson County, landscapes, rivers, lakes, and much, much more of Nelson County. Then once the students selected their lettering style and their main idea through their rough drafts and their, basically their brainstorming and their sketches, they did their planning, they're refining, they're reflecting. And then they were able to get their good twelve by twelve paper and create a really amazing posters. And I'll show you a few. So this would be an example of like of a rough draft that Lily Perry would have done. And then this is her poster idea. It says Nelson County on it. This was the honorable mention place. We have a couple more students here. This is kind of like some of the work. These are students that just didn't bring their work home last year, so I was able to find it in the art room. And luckily to show you just a few of the samples of, of the seventy-five entries that we, that we put into the contest. A couple more. This one's kind of funny. Nelson County will send the Blues away. The Blue Jays, Naturally Nelson. And then, then the student wanted to present a fox. So the students had a good time, you know, really learning more about their own environment. They, you know, they didn't know a lot of things that you would think they would have known about, you know, animals and, and different things that we have here, you know, that we're so lucky to have here in Nelson County, to choose as their subject matter. It was about a two week unit. We had a good time and I really enjoyed being part of a contest to help support the county. And I think that's pretty much it. Anybody else have questions?
Oh, well, I've got one statement to read from Mary, who was part of the environmental club. She writes, "The environmental club started as a way to involve students in starting recycling at the middle school and making useful items out of recycled materials after school. Over the years, it evolved into more of an environmental stewardship and leadership club, with its biggest project being the installation of a swale for water runoff and a native plant installation onsite at the middle school. Students also mentored younger students at the Naturally Nelson events held at the Rockfish Valley Foundation, where they assisted with stream studies, taught about runoff, and helped the foundation prepare and set up for the events. Last year, the club, with the assistance of our co-sponsor Katrina Brouman, focused on the threat of single-use plastics to our oceans, animals, and personal health. The Friends of Nelson reusable bag project fit right in with their agenda and the students worked to submit drawings and slogans to support that effort." And in addition, Katrina asked me to do a presentation to, to the club on my profession, which is a graphic designer and art director. So it was a really great way. She wanted to expose them to just all kinds of things you could do as when you grew up. And so I took that opportunity to talk to them. And again, as well as Ms. Davis, I talked to him about communication, how to communicate, words, choices, colors, fonts, all, all kinds of stuff. So it was a really, really fun opportunity and I think it was great to cross paths with so many different folks in our community.
And the four students that were named that, that won, I'm going to present them with these at school tomorrow. None of them will be here tonight, so I'll make sure that they get these.
And we'd like to leave a bag with everyone. So thank you all.
Thank you. On behalf of the board and the school system, we'd like to say thank you to the three of you and the broader community that participated in this project. You know, again, we cannot express how important it is, not only for our schools to support our schools, but our community to support our schools. And when we look at the talent that we have in the community, sharing that with their students is invaluable. So we'd like as a board to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's handing those out. The next recognition we'd like to make are the new teachers and new staff for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Dr. Hester and Crystal Chode are going to lead us in the recognition of the new, our new members. And you all have done a great job.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I appreciate that nice comment. I would like to just take a, a quick second to recognize Kara Walker as being the voice and the face of human resources for Nelson County Public Schools. She's cleaning up from our reception. But every new person that I introduced tonight has been working with her on their onboarding and getting everything in place to get started. So I wanted to take a minute to recognize her. So I have the pleasure of recognizing our new teachers and new staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with Nelson County Public Schools. Some were not able to attend this evening because of coaching or other obligations. However, we're excited that many were able to come. So I will introduce them. And then Dr. Hester has a champion for students medal for each of them because that is true, each of them is a champion for our students. Alexis Alexander Cashier at the cafeteria at the middle school. Scott Balaico, Principal Nelson Middle School. Amber Balaico, Assistant Principal Nelson County High School. Jen Callahan, Special Education Teacher at Rockfish. Mike Cargill, Supervisor of Technology, who may, there he is. Linda Dahl, English Teacher at Nelson Middle School. Amy Howard, Alternative Special Education Teacher at Nelson County High School. Adrienne McCullough, Yearbook Teacher at Nelson County High School. Patrick O'Hara, Biology and Chemistry at Nelson County High School. Tom Riley, Technology Teacher at the high school. Virginia Scott, English Teacher at the high school. Rachel Spalding, Special Education Support Specialist at the middle school. Lydia Wood, English Teacher at Nelson Middle School. And Taylor Wiskirchen, Special Education Teacher at Ty River. I also wanted to just quickly recognize the other staff that were not able to be with us this evening. And I'm just going to read their names and their positions. Lynn Hess is an English Teacher at Nelson Middle School. Lisa Bowen, Elementary at Rockfish. Haley Birch, Elementary at Ty River. Angie Campbell is an Instructional Assistant in Special Education at Rockfish. Noah Crouch, Technology Teacher at the middle school. Tamika Glover, Custodian at the high school. Miranda Hall, French Teacher at the high school. Lou Hurst, Special Education Teacher at Ty River. Jennifer Lane, Instructional Assistant, Special Education at Ty River. Kenny Lawhorn, Custodian at Ty River. Laura Love, Math Teacher at Nelson County High School. Michael Pfeifer, Athletic Trainer at the high school. Amanda Smith, Elementary Teacher at Rockfish. Carla Thompson, Custodian at Rockfish. Jack Baker, Social Studies Teacher at the high school. Bailey Casto, Health and P E at Nelson Middle School. Jesse Crowder, Cafeteria Monitor at Ty River. Jack Dolan, Special Education Teacher at Nelson County High School. Justin Durkey, Auto Mechanics Teacher at the high school. Misty Ferguson, School Librarian at Ty River. Virginia Say, Custodian at Nelson Middle School. And Ryan Wells, Music Teacher at Ty River. We were so fortunate to find such a wonderful group of people who are dedicated to our students and to each other. And we're really excited to see all the great things that they'll do in our schools this school year. Thank you.
You guys did an amazing job hiring up. And we look around, around the district around us and they say they're still ten percent down or there's so many staff down. You all have done an amazing job and I just can't wait to see the great work everybody new and everybody current is going to do. Thank you. So we. Oh, yeah, yeah. Let's take the recognition and then we'll say, because we want to recognize, our next person of honor that we would like to recognize is Emma Martin. Emma, if you don't mind stepping up. So it's, it's not often that the paper gets recognized for being in the paper. Annually, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes the importance of the role that the media plays in our school system. You know, the media can set the tone. Is it good? Is it bad? But no matter what that tone is, it's their responsibility to report all the things that are happening within the school district. And Emma's done over the years a great job on reporting. She's been with us through COVID. She's been with us through many, many ups and downs over the last couple of years. But she has been a stalwart partner with us through, through that whole process. And so this board felt very strongly, when the Virginia School Board Association said we'd like to recognize and have this media honor roll, we all felt very strongly that Emma needed to be that partner that we recognize, not only through the Nelson County Times, but through the news in advance. So we'd like to award you with this media honor roll certificate and say thank you. So I say the recognitions are always the best part of the meeting and the funnest part for sure. As Dr. Hester was saying, please feel like, I know we've got students that probably have homework or things. Please feel free to leave, to go home at this point if you'd like. We would love for you to stay. But know that you certainly do not have to. So if you'd like a few minutes, we'll give a few minutes for people to roll out if they'd like to. And if you don't want to, you don't have to. Teachers are included. Sorry, teachers, you're included too. Teachers and staff. Did you get it? Did you get it? One shot? And we will start at the fore end with Mrs. Parker.
You know, I just don't have anything to say. I guess I'd like to, I know. I'm just thinking about the queen having passed away today.
Yeah, I guess I say it.
And all of the, you know, all of the congratulations and everything, I'm still kind of like taking it in and, and reveling in it. And I didn't go to any meetings this past month, so I really don't have anything to say.
Mr. T?
So most of the new, newly hired staff have left. But I want to say welcome aboard to all of them and apologize for not being here for the meet and greet. But I will do my best to get around and meet everybody as we move forward. But congratulations to, to the staff for, for hiring so many, our admin team for hiring so many well-qualified and, and great individuals. This is a great group and that was really yeoman's work to be able to do that. Because like, like Ms. Powell was just saying, it just, you look at the school systems around us and they are, you know, ten percent down, fifteen percent down. I mean, they are struggling to find people. And as far as I know, I think we're, we're fully staffed, I think. So just a great job by everybody and welcome aboard. And also want to congratulate the Honor Society on a job well done. That list of projects that you all have done in the first few weeks of school is nothing short of amazing. And the picnic tables, fantastic idea. A couple of the Honor Society members I've recognized from my days with softball. And so I'm really glad to see, see you all there. And I think it's pretty awesome that you all were trying to get the new members involved so quickly to try to set that tone. So congratulations and thank you for doing what you do.
Mrs. Turner Giles?
Yeah, so first I'd start by saying I just want to acknowledge the untimely death of Mrs. Joan Martin, as well as Mr. Nathan Davis, who were part of our Rockfish family. Two individuals that were outstanding members of that school system and had an impressionable mark on the students that they were able to spend time with. So certainly could not start off without acknowledging them. Second of all, I'd like to acknowledge, I've had a chance to attend several of the athletic events here recently. And I just want to acknowledge the outstanding display of pride and, and cheering on the teams. We have a new section. We have a new section, cheering section, that I'm hearing is student-led and I could not be more proud because if you allow students to take charge and take lead, then great things will happen and that's what is happening at these events. So I want to acknowledge Principal Kevin Walker, who has taken the time to meet with those students and let them know that we are here to support their efforts. So thank you for that. Also to the Honor Society, congratulations to you all. I had the pleasure of attending last Friday the National Honor Society event. You all put on quite a show, it was wonderful and just so excited for all of the great work that you all have done. So thank you.
Mr. Perkins?
Just want to thank everybody for attending the meeting and for all the great things that y'all are doing, staff and otherwise and community support. Just appreciate everything that everyone's doing.
I think I can echo, you all all speak so eloquently, I can echo what they said. We're excited, I mean, the greatest thing about school and why we're all here is exactly what you all are doing and representing and that's amazing work, how quickly. It's hard for me, most of you I knew when you were babies, so it's hard for me to see that you are such young adults doing so much good work and I am very proud of all that you have done. I will echo what Mrs. Turner Giles said, the vibe, the energy at our athletic events has been incredible and what you all are doing with the student sections, even the community coming out, it feels great. And I think when we talk about branding Nelson County and things like you all painting the governor on the dugouts, all of those things, we feel this energy and I will tie it back to athletic directors, administrators, teachers, staff, students, people, your positive energy is coming through. And as a community member, I feel that. So kudos to everybody for that because I think that's where it starts, right? Beyond that, we've got a lot of important dates coming up. I think you can see the sheet there, all that is getting ready to happen. I'm not going to read through them all, we do have our board development training, the end of the month, that will happen here in this room. So if there are any issues with that, please let me know. There are multiple V SBA trainings coming up, superintendent evaluation. Is there a lot?
Title nine. Yeah, there's a lot of different...
Yep. If you have any individual interest in participating in any of that training, please let Tammy know so we can get you registered for those events upcoming. I believe there is a board of supervisors meeting next Tuesday. I know, thank you to Margaret and to Dr. Hester for attending the planning meeting yesterday in regards to the Larkin land purchase. I think there's a lot of good information probably to share, a lot of ideas floating on what that may or may not could look like. So we'll look forward to hearing more. I caught, I came in on the tail end of it, so I was not able to, my report on it would be, I'd do more damage than good because I think I missed most of the content. So we look forward to hearing that. Hard to believe, within about a month, I think we end our first nine weeks of school. It's hard to believe we're already there, so be prepped up for that. But that's it, any other dates we need to be aware from the rest of the board members? No other dates? Okay. The next part then, it is you, Dr. Hester. You are up next.
Thank you very much. So as Ms. Payer just mentioned, we've just completed about our first month. So we started August 10th, tomorrow, September 9th. So we're right now... Opening is flown by, not due to a lack of exciting things taking place. I don't think we all anticipated having to provide a closure of school due to a storm that, I think it was August 22nd, Link 3rd, something like that. So that was a fun little curveball that got thrown. But, you know, I think I want to appreciate everybody who's involved in that because that was a true collaboration and partnership with BDOT, transportation, maintenance, communicating with everybody, really taking to effect the overall impact of that storm, whether it's emotionally, historically, and also physically. When you take a look at some of the sinkholes, some of the damages to the road, it was just not worth the risk of putting a bus or someone on the road to... Have something named and take place. So first throughout the school's gone by, gone by well and we just appreciate all the hard work and the support from our community. I think we recognize our new staff and I think that's so exciting and I think, as you all know, our theme this year is one Nelson. And if you recognize, that was all of our new staff. It wasn't one specific group versus another because as we keep saying is, it takes everybody to be a successful school system. And so that's our custodians, our maintenance, our transportation, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, instructional aides, our student interns. That's a really new position for us that I'm super excited about, having a student and having that work-based learning opportunity, instructional assistants, everybody. Everybody makes this work. And so I appreciate the recognition of that, kind of that one Nelson theme. But I also want to take an extra opportunity, we had a couple members of our administrative team take on kind of extra roles throughout the end of last year and also over the summer and the start of the school year. There's Jessica Scheffler, I don't know if she is here right now. Is she? Okay. She was the interim middle school principal, starting the summer and then for this first month of school and really took on the lion's share of the planning and the organization and just really getting the school year started and did so really, really well. And I think, you know, the staff appreciated her efforts and the end results of all of it. So I want to thank her because that work, it doesn't go underappreciated, undervalued. It's tough, you know, it's playing two roles. And so, you know, we, Mr. Balaico, who was introduced earlier today, today was his first day on the job and so, you know, we're excited about having that admin team fully staffed and really operable. And the same on the other side of the high school, we have Mr. Walker and Ms. Goff, who were finishing up the end of last year, kind of one administrator down in a sense and then continued through the summer and started the school year. And again, we're able to come full staff, the administrative team there at the high school as well, Ms. Balaico starting at her first day today as well. And I think it speaks volumes about what we have to offer in terms of our services and our school because those individuals brought their family with them and are entrusting their children with us. And I think for me, that's a big, huge compliment for Nelson and that doesn't go over lightly. I really appreciate that. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank them. And also to get a school system ready, those departments that frequently go understaffed or it's hard to staff, like our custodians, our cafeteria workers, nurses, transportation and maintenance, that is when a lot of their work gets done. You know, they're cutting the grass, they're fixing and repairing, they're getting everything ready, we're getting our routes ready and picking up our children. And they operated significantly down for a lot of our time and they still got it done and it was beautiful and it was seamless. And I can't thank those individuals enough for the hard work that they put into doing that. And it's important because we can't be successful unless those jobs get done and our kids really benefit from that, so I appreciate it. We did talk a little bit about the meeting with the board of supervisors and other community individuals to discuss exciting opportunities about the Larkin land, land purchased kind of on the other side of the middle school and the high school in the back end. And just, you know, being new to that conversation, but the potential and the opportunities that we have there and the collaboration and the inclusion aspect of that, we're really excited about and appreciate that effort. So thank you. And Ms. McGary was there at the meeting, Ms. Reed was at the meeting and we just appreciate those opportunities to be able to be a part of that and we're really excited about, you know, some of the opportunities that are there, so thank you. Fall growth assessments, you know, we love testing so much, but fall growth assessments have been completed, so it gives us a baseline. It really lets us know where we're starting from and how we move, so that has been completed. Instruction is in full swing. You go around to any of our classrooms, teachers and instructional assistants, everybody's working really, really hard, the kids are engaged, so that's really, really exciting to see. And then on the other aspect, because it's not all just about instruction and academics, you have the activities, our clubs, our sports are in full swing, even our school base and what Ms. Turner Giles said, how refreshing, it doesn't matter what sport you go into. The first, I guess, official sport activity I went to was a girls volleyball and the student section in there, I think it was a cowboy night, then there were some ladies involved and it was, I don't know if it was a Hawaiian cowboy, but it didn't matter because the students were so vocal and so supportive of each other and that is just heartwarming because the students feed off of that as well. And I think the parents also gain that appreciation and I know I do, Mr. Walker was there and had a chance to kind of experience that. But all of our sports are in full swing, first home game was last week. We have another home game, September is filled with home football games, just FYI, we have six home football games. They all seem to be in September, even though there's only four weeks. The homecoming game is the 16th. So we, you know, obviously we want to invite our entire community out to that. I know for our schools, we're planning a division-wide tailgate, so you'll expect a survey to be going out soon. We're also going to hold our first division-wide spirit day, which will be a green and gold day. So hopefully we'll carry that over to the game and really just generate that community experience and excitement because I think that was just a really great experience for me to go to that football game and go to the volleyball game and our families are there, our community is there and our kids are there. So I invite everybody to attend the homecoming game as well and any other activity that we have going on. But I also had a chance to see some of our kids participate in events outside of our school, at the local rodeo that was held this past weekend, we had some barrel racers that are our students. And you get to see them kind of outside of school in things that they're passionate and they're good at and they love. And so that was really inspiring to be able to watch our students. And then in the hallways today, I'll be like, I saw you, you were on horse, I saw you earlier and just that, they're kind of that recognition and that, it was just nice. We are currently navigating an unexpected announcement that the YMCA is concluding their after-school services around September 16th. So what we're doing is we've met with some local organizations, the county and some other individuals to generate some strategies and some plans to be able to support our families that are in need of that after-school care. We have another follow-up meeting coming up Monday and it's just, it's, organizations suffer the same after-effects of everybody else when it comes to staffing, when it comes to just being able to support some services. And we understand that, but we still want to be able to support our families, so that's something that we're working through as well. And I think that is the extent of my comments. Appreciate it.
Any questions or comments on Dr. Hester's comments?
Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public? I don't know. No comments from the public. We're at the consent agenda portion of our agenda. Do I have a motion or any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? Registers for August 2022 are the second reading of the meeting minutes from July 14th. No questions? There are no questions, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So items for information, Tammy has posted the August 11th meeting minutes, it's the first reading, so if you get a chance, please look through those minutes and ensure that everything you said or did is represented and if there are any changes that need to happen, please contact Tammy and let her know to make those adjustments. And then additional items for information, Dr. Hester, it's back to you again.
Yes, alright. My apologies, I think I did not hit the unmute, so it's a good thing I still have a ton of push-ups going on, so I apologize.
Alright, let's see if this is working. And I kind of get, you have the disadvantage of seeing the back of me, but I have the distinct advantage of being able to talk about all the great things that are taking place here in Nelson County that keep us on our pathway to success and achieving our goals. Particularly when we talk about administration, the operations of the overall, we're really kind of shifting into where the activity really takes place. We had some storms that resulted in some lightning damage, so, you know, putting in claims for insurance, we'll talk in the maintenance section about some of the repairs that we were making, but that, you know, those are the types of the wear and tear that takes place when you have those storms. Also, we're still keeping up to date and working through COVID and any kind of cases or outbreaks and things of that nature and making sure that we keep evaluating our plans and trying to keep the safest environment we can. We also continue to get our volunteer forms, so we always encourage the public, if you'd like to volunteer and support our schools, please feel free to do so, contact us, we'll give you a volunteer form and we'll be able to figure out a way for you to contribute and give back. Process through finalizing audit reports, all the end-of-year financials that we have to go through, also submitting educational registry for the DOE. This is the season where the Virginia Department of Education, there's a lot of end-of-year from last year reports that are due that we contribute and develop and then submit. In terms of instruction, like I said, we're now in full go, so all that planning that takes place in the spring and the summer, now it's being implemented. We have a lot of planning on behalf of the literacy plans and the literacy goals that we have, so you have literacy coaches working on PD sessions for teachers and Director of Instruction, making sure they're going in and working with the coaches and also the teachers. And that is all a division-wide goal to make sure we support our students in those skills that require the mastery in order for them to be successful in any subject, in any aspect of what they're doing in school. It's apple butter time with our FFA, so there are a lot of the experiences of making that and just preparing for that and doing a lot of things throughout the CTE world as they gear up for some of the competitions and some of the things that they participate in. Mr. Durkey is a new automotive teacher that we have this year and is really cool opportunity that they're providing for our staff to be able to bring their vehicles in for some of the more simple services and repairs. For instance, I had an oil change and the upper right picture, I had an opportunity to work with those three, I didn't work with the three gentlemen, I stood there, but I asked a lot of questions. And it was really cool because they had a passion for it, they had an enthusiasm, it was hands-on, it was engaged, they were polite, they were knowledgeable, because I would ask them like, what's that thing? What's this thing over here? And they would be able to explain it and then they'd have to pause and think about, well, what does it do? So when you can explain what something is, then you know it. And then watching them kind of check through the process, because that's not only a life skill, but that's a career opportunity for many of these, the kids that were in there, boys and girls, various demographics in that class. And it was just, it was a lot of fun to be able to watch take place. So you see the Jeep up on the lift there too, it was in there for, not sure what its repair was. It's a good thing I didn't keep my state inspection sticker on there, it was not quite compliant, so I'm working on that. But there was someone else in there that beat me by eight months, so I'm not going to say who. Also, just the overall participation, you know, the cabinet instructional team was greatly involved in the last football game, just participating and talking with the community and engaged and involved and it's just really great to be able to see that. Like I mentioned before, our growth assessments, now the instructional team's going to take some opportunities to analyze that data, disaggregate it and see how we can build from there. In terms of pupil personnel, Ms. McCormick and her group has really been doing a lot of things with working with T-TAC to be able to, you know, just work through best practices and collaborating to bolster the services and the technology that we're providing to support our students. Also working through the positive behaviors intervention systems through the motivation and the rewards that take place and just supporting those behaviors with our student body. And I guess if you look at the picture in the top left, our staff. And it's just great to be able to invest back in our students and start to see those successes, you see some of those pictures with our students where they start to see their own successes and that helps breed that confidence to be able to take those risks and the learning that they're doing. And we couldn't do any of this without some of the support of our local organizations. Elmar Mariachi has provided and donated some of these rewards that we're able to provide on behalf of this, so we appreciate all that support. Human Resources Communications continues to be busy, putting on a substitute workshop in August, we also have our September substitute workshop planned. It's being able to bring in those, we had 11 individuals participate in the August and so that's very exciting. You know, in a time where it's hard to find substitutes and hard to find people to do things, we're able to bring in 11 in this session, so we're looking forward to the next session. Also continuing to work through the employee handbook and also streamlining for an efficient and effective observation process and tools. We had an additional standard added to the evaluation process this year in cultural competency, so going back through, making sure we're adding that and then applying it and learning how to do that for our teachers and going through and training our administrators on that. So that's kind of an exciting process, it doesn't seem like it at first, but we know that the observation, the evaluation process and the feedback that goes into it makes our staff better, that then in turn helps our students, that is pretty exciting to us. Technology, Mr. Cargill hidden in the room in there, not only does he does wonderful things like this and making sure our meetings and technology set up for that, but he's been putting on trainings for our teachers, instituting Block C, which allows our staff to be able to monitor things taking place on the computers, but also Promethean training and the whole entire Nelson County technology team has been working tirelessly throughout the summer, but also at the start of the school year because that's when things, you know, we're rolling out computers to Ty River, central office and updating things and obviously when you roll things out, sometimes you have to have some technology support. So Mr. Cargill, Marshall, excuse me, Marshall Beeler, Darren McKenzie and Troy Francis, we all want to, big shout out to those individuals, so single-handedly being able to take care of all those needs and the rollouts that were taking place, so we thank them so much for that. Maintenance, you know, Les Campbell, I'm not sure that he sleeps a whole lot because he always seems to be out and about. he always seems to be out and about working on things and addressing any issues that we may have going on. We did see some extent of some storm damages and lightning that took place with some of the most recent storms. So there was working to resolve any kind of electrical issues that we saw at the football field. Some of those electrical issues also impacted our irrigation system, so we had to replace the thermal magnetic circuit breaker that you see in the upper right-hand corner, and that also led to the irrigation systems and certain light on the football field. Ty River received its new walk-in freezer, as you see that in the bottom left-hand corner. And that's a coordinated feat right there, to be able to deliver that and have it installed. So we want to thank Chrissy with the School Nutrition, but also Les, to be able to coordinate those efforts, because as we also talk about, when I talk about food nutrition, is we had community support on that, and I'll get to that in just a second. Rockfish still continues, we're finishing up the project in the vestibule and making sure that we have those installed the way that we, our expectations, and so sometimes it requires calling some people back to take a look at it and make sure that it's done to our expectations and to the safety measures that we expect for our students. And so those are some of the projects that maintenance has been working on. Transportation, it's been a busy, busy time for them. I really want to thank Taylor Ashley, our supervisor of transportation, because, you know, he was really integral when we had to close schools for that storm, is he was out and he was traveling all around the county and in communications with VDOT and the Sheriff's Dispatch and us, and trying to really make the best decision for us. As you can see, that picture on the right is the sinkhole, that was kind of the no-brainer when you see that and the decisions that you have to make, because you don't put a big, heavy bus on that. Also, he is continuing with the training that takes place. We're constantly recruiting and getting in new candidates to be bus drivers, and that requires some training. And so some of that is making sure we go through our pre-trip check-down to make sure everything's in working order. And then also, the physical driving aspect and skills, is going through the obstacle course and learning how to back a big bus up, all those types of skills. And so that continues to take place. They're all looking to try to get that third-party CDL licensure here so we can do it, so we don't have to travel to Roanoke, so we can be able to train our people and then get their licenses here. We are excited that our recent trainees just passed their CDL license with flying colors, and we're on the road today, and we'll be covering routes on Monday. So we're really super excited of that, and we continue to recruit and try to bring in more drivers, so then we can ultimately maybe change up some routes to lessen the time and lessen the number of students on it, just to make sure that we can do the best that we can for our students. And then lastly, food nutrition, creating staff, creative staffing solutions, where, as I told you before, we had a student intern at the high school being able to serve in this capacity, and also Mr. Jesse Crowder, a new addition for a lunch monitor, and kind of pulling from our current and former student populations to be able to help us out. The collaborative effort to install the walk-in freezer. And we really want to give a shout out to Danny Johnson and the Blue Dog Associates for housing our food that we had in the Ty River freezer. If we had not had that help, we could have taken a loss on the food and on the money that it takes to be able to go buy a freezer or rent a freezer. And so we really appreciate the community support and effort to be able to house that food and be a part of this, so then we could get our freezer in and then get everything back into it. I was at Ty River one of the days, they were trying to move stuff around to get prepared for it, and it's not a small feat to be able to do. And so we just appreciate everything taking place. Also, Ty River received a $33,000 grant for equipment, and so the process of kind of getting that rolled out and shown off is taking place kind of throughout this week, so we're pretty excited about that. And that is all that I have for our updates, and once again, I always want to kind of reiterate, we have that one Nelson mentality, and it takes everybody to be able to be successful on our journey and our pathway to success. So I appreciate it, thank you much. Does anybody have any questions? You're exhausted? Yeah. Everybody, doesn't need to hear my voice for a while. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hester. Much appreciated. That's a lot of good things going on.
Absolutely.
So I believe every year we get an update on the Activity Fund Audit ending June 2022. We missed you, Shannon, it feels like we haven't talked to you in a while since it's budget time. Come up and tell us what's going on.
I'm happy to report that our schools did undergo that required by code, an Activity Fund Audit during the month of July, which covered the previous this year from July 1 to June 30. Happy to say that there were no division-wide findings by the audit, so maybe our internal controllers that we have in place, with the staffing that we have is adequate, and they didn't see a room for improvement, so proud of that. We had one school that didn't find it at all.
Kudos to our Fifth River Elementary School with Courtney Trashley, like the bookkeeper there. The other schools had some findings that I'd like to talk about, just because they were probably my fault more than their fault. A suggestion that has been a recurring suggestion for a number of years was to transfer excess operating funds over to a money market account. When we investigated that several years ago, we found that the fees that the bank charged outweighed the interest that we would earn because the earnings were so poor on a savings account, on a money market account. So we didn't take that suggestion, even though it was given to us before, but we purposely didn't take it because we thought it would be to our detriment to do so. Now that the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates, I think it might be time to relook at it and see if we think there's a cost benefit to the school division to invest funds that way, and we'll be happy to do so. So we are going to be exploring that in the coming weeks. Other findings, I think, were minor, one was human error. We have drilled and drilled and drilled into our bookkeepers, is that the school division is taxed, and as such, we don't pay sales taxes from the division. And we had one person that deducted the sales tax twice, so she went above and beyond. What we had asked her to do was to not take sales tax off, so it was just a mistake that was picked up by the auditor, but we're glad we did it, and we're glad that that message is getting through to our bookkeepers, is to double-check that, because a lot of vendors don't recognize that school divisions are taxed. The other two findings that we had basically were reports that were done correctly by the bookkeepers, but were not signed off by the building principal, and that was because we were in a state of flux with building principals, so we didn't have one on staff. And so instead of going to the assistant principal, they just turned it in without a signature. So we've gone over protocols now to realize that, okay, if the principal's not there, we have an assistant, and that would suffice, so they just didn't know to do that. But other than that, it was a great audit. Proud of the work that the bookkeepers do, because a lot of times the school environment can get hectic, a lot of calls, a lot of parents, a lot of requests coming in, and to have those minimal findings, I think, is a testament to their proficiency and the ability to adapt, so thank you.
Any questions or comments? It's a tough job. Tough job. Goodness to them. Thank you, Shannon, for sharing that. So the next part of our agenda, we've got three items for action, we're going to take each of them individually. We do need a motion to approve to declare the textbook surplus. May I have a motion? If there are no questions in regards to that, may I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the textbook surplus.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes with approval to declare the textbook surplus. The next item for action we have is approval for an out-of-state field trip. This is the trip that BRVGS normally takes every year. We usually get this approval request before now, but BRVGS has had a change at the administrative level, and so the delay for requests for these field trips came in due to that change in leadership. So it is the same trip they do year over year. Are there any questions in regards to it? Okay, to DC. Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for BRVGS?
I move that we approve the BRVGS field trip to Washington, DC, as presented.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the field trip is approved. The final thing we have in an action item is, last month, we did policy approvals. In one of the policy approvals, we needed to add a number of days that would be allowed for civic events, after some research around local communities and local school systems. That number... I need that policy with the 10 days written into it, so that we can put it into action. May I have any question? And given the policy that we just needed to put the number of days in there.
I move that we approve the amended policy with the 10 days.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions, conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, policy JED has now been approved with the updated days. Okay, thank you so much. And at this point, we will need to go into closed meeting for Personnel, Student and Legal Matters. If I could have a motion to put us into closed session for those three items, please.
I move that the school board go into closed meeting for, to discuss and consider student matters, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 for the purposes of discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students, to discuss and consider the personnel positions for the Nelson County Public Schools and/or other confidential personnel matters, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, promotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and to discuss legal matter with counsel, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding a specific legal matter or matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
I know, that was a good one. And may I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're now in closed session.